Ron's here, and we got everybody, so. All right, we have 5:01 PM, so I will call this city council work session to order and ask Nicole to take roll call, please.
Blake? February Montgomery? Obrecht?
Here.
Pogi?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
All right, we got everybody. All right, well, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Blake?
Second.
Pogi, discussion roll call.
Blake?
Yes.
Pogi?
Yes.
February Montgomery?
Yes.
Obrecht?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So with that, I'll turn it over to AJ to start the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, thank you for taking time in advance of your regular scheduled council meeting to talk about this very important issue. I know that Jan is on the, on the, joined us as well, so she's out there somewhere in cyber connection. So she will be joining in on the conversation. I'll make reference to her as well, and, and so she will kind of tag team this as we go along. Again, thank you for your time this afternoon. I know we have an hour to discuss this, and we'll probably take all of that time. And certainly, I don't expect you to make some decisions tonight. This is informational meeting, but certainly, given the environment that we're in now, that at some point, the decision will have to be made on this particular topic for us to move forward in a particular direction. And there will be a lot of moving parts associated with that. Not only what you decide to do as a council, but in conjunction with, and as we have modeled ourselves, or not modeled, but has been part of a, kind of a joint activity through other metro cities, trying to do things in lockstep as best we can, so no one community is, is automatically inundated with patrons of any of our services or facilities. So tonight, we have the opportunity, and more importantly, you have the opportunity to discuss among yourselves, to hear some background information concerning our swimming pool. For the two members, for the three new members of council, this has been an ongoing discussion. We've had about the swimming pool for a number of years. I know that particularly Bridgette has been on the capital improvements program before, and that has been a subject of lots of discussion, and certainly, an item that has garnered her attention over the last several years as to what we should be doing in offering a pool. What I'd like to do is to set for tonight, the tone for tonight's discussion, is we need to talk about the existing pool and how we're going to deal with it right now and into the near future. Discussions about what we do in the future, obviously, are going to be linked to what you decide in the next several weeks or part of this discussion, but we're not here tonight really to talk about that, because there is still a lot of moving parts that you, as a council in the community, will have to come to some discussion on and some decisions on before that moves its natural course of review, decision making, and ultimately, an election by the citizenry. So, again, our focus tonight, I would ask that we just keep it on the existing pool. Now, decisions that you will make at some point based on this discussion with the existing pool will certainly affect down the road as how you, as a council in the community, wishes to approach either a pool, recreation center, an aquatic center, whatever you want to call it. There certainly, that's going to be a factor, but as best we can, again, let's just focus on our existing situation. Because right now, we have a pool that has been closed since March. And so, we're going into multiple weeks. The governor's proclamation says that all swimming pools shall be closed through May 27. I have read excerpts of her presentation today, her news conference in the Des Moines Register online, and it gave me the impression that she's going to be making some announcement tomorrow, possibly Thursday, about the remaining components of her proclamation that are still essentially closed, which are pools, playgrounds, play equipment, those type of things. And so, you have, again, this is just my observation. It could be as wrong as rain, but you have an upcoming Memorial Day weekend, and you have a lot of outdoor facilities that are owned and operated by cities, counties, that are closed to the public. One might think that it would be opportunistic for her to say that we need to open these up in advance of this holiday. That's not a statement, whether it's right or wrong, it's just one of those things that we have to deal with. But for us, the pool is one of those things. And so, as we sent out the additional support material that we put out last week, and some of the conversations I've had with some of you recently, and particularly with council member Russell and Pogi, the conversations we've had in the past, again, we have the only indoor pool in the city. We have a facility that we program, as many hours as it's open, we program it. We squeeze every penny we can out of that pool, and still, we, we have a significant general fund subsidy to keep those doors open. We also provide a lot of different levels of service within that pool that we have a very loyal following. But when you break it down, and Jan can go into a little bit more detail, when you break it down, as her staff has done a very good job of doing, that you find that we really have numerically only a small number of people who use it repeatedly, and of that number, approximately half are non-residents. So, we're now at a situation where our pool is closed. We know the economics of it, and we can talk a little bit more in detail about those. And now, we'll be faced with a situation, an opportunity, that when the governor lifts her restrictions on pools, what is it that we do? Do we keep the pool closed? Or do we present ourselves an opportunity to roll the pool back open with a significant amount of restrictions based on how we now have to deal with COVID-19 and the realities of providing services within the framework that COVID-19 and all that it brings with it? That's our new reality. And how you assure the public that you're going to have as safe an environment as possible where you're actually have locker rooms, where you have people standing on the deck. In the water, as Jan will explain to you, is not a problem. CDC guidelines, Iowa Department of Health, they have little concern about people in the water. Because of all the chemicals needed to keep the water safe, it kills things like this bacteria and this virus. It's under the pool, it's the locker rooms, it's the changing areas, it's the waiting area, it's on the deck. All of those things factor into these decisions, and it makes it much more different than we've ever had to deal with. So that kind of setting the stage as to what we hope that you'll have the discussion tonight. So, Jan, if you would please, could you give an overview of the, of what our peers are doing throughout the metro as a point of context?
Certainly. And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, been keeping close communications with the Parks and Recreation Directors throughout the metro since March, trying to be as consistent as possible in the Northwest Metro with West Des Moines, Clive, Johnston, Waki, and Urbendale, such as when the playgrounds closed, we all close the same day, use the same wording for our playground closures and so forth. So again, almost daily communication. And as the reference here that Nicole has up on the form, and I think you received quite possibly earlier, but this gives kind of a, I sent it out to the area communities, they filled in the information of what are area communities doing. As for tonight's discussion in regards to the pool, obviously, we have the only indoor pool. And as AJ mentioned, I think there's many layers to this. Tonight's discussion be, one, is related to COVID. Two, if we have the bigger discussion and what appetite we may or may not have, you as a council of, of, if we don't open the pool, and then certainly down the line of, of a future facility. Right now, to share with you what other communities are talking in regards to what are they doing related to COVID. That has no, in my opinion, nothing to do with indoor or outdoor. It's CDC guidelines, it's what the governor right now has restrictions. And right now, West Des Moines, as you can see, they will make a decision in probably early June, but they are closed for sure, or they're not going to open for sure until June 29th. Clive, as you know, from a press release last night or today, that they are closed for the season. They may consider swim lessons, but that is later to be determined. Clive is, or Ankeny is still in discussions, and their, their council had discussions last night continuing to try to make those decisions. So, I know that there are five to 10 pools in the state that have said, "We're not opening for anything. We need to cut our staff free so they can make further plans for employment this summer." An example is Cedar Rapids, Osceola, Winterset, a number of other communities that they have officially said, "We're not opening for anything." Again, more relevant, I think, again, is this chart here of what other communities are doing. Had discussions, I know our staff has listened to every CDC web, web meeting there's been. IPRA has almost weekly meetings, the Iowa Park and Rec Association of, of what are pools doing? It certainly is the hot topic. Waiting to find out what the governor recommends, but as AJ and I almost talk daily, the CDC and the governor can lift restrictions, but certainly, the city then, and you as council members, need to evaluate and recommend and make decisions. But some of the things related to the pool, and we talked about, if we still have the restrictions for distancing, social distancing, and those restrictions, and 10 or less, we could open the pool for programs. It would be lapsuit, it would be the maximum of six people. Water aerobics class, the maximum of nine plus one instructor. We're not sure what swim lessons could possibly look like. Other communities are talking about maybe having parents go in the water with children. Instructor, our instructor tells the parent how to do it if you can't touch that child. It doesn't seem realistic to us right now. So, we're looking at, if we were to open, and these relevant, I, I personally don't think social distancing is magically going to change in the next month. We have some very significant restrictions. So what we, as you can see on this chart, minimally, we are recommending, if, if there's not an appetite right now to say, "Let's not make a decision in the next week or two about we're never going to open the pool again." We're recommending at least through July 6th. A lot of communities are having issues with, you still need to train staff. You can't train staff and teach lifeguarding skills if they can't do a save on another lifeguard or another employee. You can't give a lifeguard certification to a staff person if they're not trained. And even talking to the levels of, and I could, I don't want to take up too much of your time here, but talking to the levels of, if we were to open, we would need two shifts minimally of staff, because if one person at the pool tests positive, you shut down the pool. When a staff person gets it, now that whole staff will be, you need to be quarantined for 14 days. So, twice as much staff for very limited numbers. So we do have some, some concerns of what COVID is actually going to do for programming, recreation, other parameters that we possibly can do minimal, but pool, I don't know how you social distance children in a pool or adults or anyone. So, I'm going to stop now and, and certainly answer any questions, and, and AJ or whoever proceed.
Yeah. Just going to say, I've had problems with the, whoops, with my WebEx connection, so I apologize. Yep, I'm getting a lot of reverberation here, so.
AJ, you're welcome to come down and join John and I in a large conference room. We have enough room, we can socially distance you.
Better? No?
Can I, I'll ask a question while we're waiting, if Jan, I think this is for Jan anyway. We can wait six months and go back and fill the pool if, just throwing that number out there. Is it mothballed, or?
Yes, right now, the pool is drained. We've done, usually, we drain it in August to do our annual maintenance. We did that in March, so there's no water in it. We're not paying for heating, heating the water, anything like that. So, certainly, that is an option of, of, of not, I mean, there's no urgency to get water back in the pool. It is, it's just the building that doesn't have water in it right now.
Well, just to make sure there wasn't any time limit on the amount that it could be empty based on its age or condition?
No, right now, it can exist. We do have one question I need to call the liner company, is if there needs to be any water on that liner to make sure it doesn't deteriorate, but otherwise, limited, limited maintenance right now, just keeping the, the building going. But again, there's no water in the pool.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think I've got my technical issues resolved. Is that much better?
That's much better.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, technology and Johnson are, we're learning as we go. Anyway, I picked up the conversation, I know that Bridgette had asked some operational questions about some expenses and such. And I think that's a good segue going into, again, some of the realities of the, the pool operation that we've had. Information that we had sent out earlier at the end of last week, and then I know Nicole can put up on the screen now, is the, the trend and the subsidy, subsidy analysis that we've had. And again, it gets us back to that point of, she, there she goes, is, this, the actual from fiscal year 14 and projected through, estimated through fiscal year 22. And again, not news to council members Russell or Pogi, and probably not to all of you who read through this, but the pool is, is subsidized. I've been doing this a long time, and I don't know a single pool that makes it on its own. It is always considered to be a community amenity, and the consensus of the community is, is that it's going to take more than what you generate at the pool through concessions, whatever it is, keep the pool open, because we believe it has value for our community. As we mentioned before, this is a 44-year-old pool, and from a matter of economics, you are not only supporting the pool through the monies that we generate through programming fees, but you also generate it through the support of the general fund in the tune of about $300,000 on average. Again, our, as Jan has outlined in other material that we've sent out, our prime time to generate revenue for the pool is March through May. And that window is now gone for us. And so that could be upwards to another $180,000. So theoretically, or not theoretically, but practically, we're pushing a half a million dollars that in lost revenue plus the subsidy that we're looking to keep, that, that it's, it's an effect on the general fund essentially. And so, again, that is, I think that's unavoidable in the level of discussion that you should have about, you know, the value of the pool as it related to the subsidy that you have. And again, it's, it is an economic matter. It's, it's, again, you can, as a council, you can debate and think about how the pool impacts the community and the value it has to those who use it, whether it's a large group or a small group. The notion of that a community should have a pool or not have a pool. But the economic reality is, is that it's, it is a, it is a financial reality that it costs us a lot of money to keep the doors open. And moving forward in this new reality of COVID and how it affects pools, and as Jan just mentioned, the, the almost near impossibility to generate what we used to do a year ago to now, given the environment we have to work in, and then knowing that that subsidy is not going to get any smaller, and that your revenue stream for the foreseeable future will not be what it once was. So, again, that, that is, that's part of our discussion, is that it's the economic reality is that this pool is, 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 presents itself to be a significant financial commitment on the behalf of the city to keep those doors open. Even on your best days, it was a heavy-duty subsidy. On your worst days, that we're probably facing now, that subsidy and impact on our financial position is far greater. And that recovery opportunity, again, crystal ball as best as you can, that recovery opportunity, I think, is going to be a very slow process to get us back to where we once were. And as we, we've said numerous times on almost everything that we do that has an impact on the public, which is everything we do, but the voluntary impacts about when are people going to feel comfortable coming back into a setting such as a pool to have that interaction with lifeguards, with swimming instructors, and with other users? And it, it really, it's an unknown. And it's just like what happens when you open up other facilities, and you've seen that in a very limited, limited basis since the governor lifted her restrictions on restaurants. Some have opened, some haven't. It's getting the customers back into the seats, and it's really the same for us. Getting those customers back into the pool, when will that take place and how will that take place? So that's, again, something to, to consider. And then another thing, as part of the existing pool, we have a 2080 agreement with the Urbendale Community School District. That expires in 2026, and that's six years away. And that may seem like a long time, but I can guarantee you that will go lickety-split. In six years, we'll, we'll go by very, very fast. And the decisions, that, that ground that we lease from the school, the decision will be the school's then. They can either renegotiate a lease with us, or essentially, they can evict us. And so, that's always kind of been in the back of our mind. And I know that we weren't going to talk about the future plans, but that was always part of the discussion, the future plans of a pool too. You have this date certain in 2026, that regardless of what you do, you close the pool, you negotiate a new agreement, you do something differently, you have that date that's out there. And so that's always part of our conversation. And again, it's, it's not going to have an immediate impact as today's discussion, but it's, it's unavoidable to know that in six years, a discussion, this discussion will have an impact on that next set of activities that you take toward that six-year time period. And again, the discussion is that you have a pool, it's closed, and what are we going to do with it? And if, if the decision is that we're going to keep it closed, then that may or may not accelerate some of those discussions with the school on that 2026 issue.
Hey AJ?
Yes?
On that issue, real quick, I know 2026 is the end, but the school has the right at any point in time to say, "You're out."
That's correct. And what, what, if they do that, then they have a greater financial responsibility for the demolition of the pool. If they wait till 2026, that percentage, that percentage split is less. I want to say it's 40% or something. I don't have the agreement here in front of me, but there is a, to their advantage, it's an economic incentive not to call that unless they had a dire need to have that property.
AJ, if I can just weigh in here, by looking at the agreement, it's 40% for the school district if it's tomorrow or if it's 2026, percentage doesn't change.
All right, thank you.
And the 40% was set back when the agreement was signed too. So it's 40% of the cost back then.
Yes. No?
Yeah. There was a timeframe, I, I'm, gosh, now I'm going to lose myself a bit. It was several years.
But in essence, the school's in charge, in essence.
Yes, they got a dollar amount, and I know that they generated, and Radam, you may recall that, I think they generated a number from DeCarlo, DeCarlo Demolition Company about what they thought it might be just for a ballpark number to have as a matter of discussion.
Yep, I, I seemed to be on the other side of the fence at that point in time, so yes, it got generated.
So there was, that, obviously, that's part of the discussion. So again, that, that's out there. That's, again, we have that date certain, and it certainly will work its way into, any of the conversations we have is that it's a reality is, in 2026, there's going to have, it has to be done.
AJ, this is David, and here's my question. If we closed down, Jan, have you done any kind of numbers on what it would cost us to keep the doors closed per month or per year? Specifically, the utilities, the maintenance, salaries? We close the doors and we keep the doors closed, what's it costing us?
I think that would be a, obviously, a discussion with AJ and you as council, but if it's closed and we say we're not going to open again, there really wouldn't be much cost, because we would shut down, we wouldn't have the HVAC we're running, we wouldn't have the, the utilities going, the water would stay, be empty. Certainly, a staff discussion in regards to, right now, we have one full-time and two permanent part-time staff. So we have discussed internally of what opportunities within our department may be an option. But the rest for the lifeguards and so forth, they are seasonal and part-time. So I can tell you that every lifeguard, I recommend my kids, I wish they would be lifeguards, they can find a job, I don't know, this year, but certainly, lifeguards are a hot commodity. But in regards to what it would cost, if a decision is, "We're not going to open again," I would anticipate it to be very limited, because you wouldn't be paying the utilities and things like that. And again, if Dave or Steve are online and, and, or AJ certainly weigh in, but that would be my opinion.
Obviously, like any of our buildings, you essentially, you shut it down. You turn the utilities off, except for that minimally, you probably leave the lights on for security purposes. We've always talked about there are, we would salvage the building as best we could. We know we have equipment in there. For example, we have boilers that are not that old that we could take into fire station number two, because those boilers need to be replaced, and so that's an $80,000 savings for moving those boilers to another building. The, the maintenance has looked at that already and has determined that that's, that's doable, and that's a cost avoidance that we have for a project we know is down the road for us. So I would agree with Jan. I don't know that we can generate a specific number, but the savings would be the fact that you would not have a building open. You'd probably still carry some level of insurance on the building for liability purposes. Again, we can prorate that out, and we could probably get that number, but my guess is it's relatively minimal. And if you close the pool, we're good, that your intentions are never to open it again, it certainly could generate advanced discussions with the school district as to what they wanted to do with the building on the, pardon me, what we would do with the building on their land and what plans they may or may not have. And again, just because of everything we're experiencing now has accelerated that discussion, and I'm going back to my earlier statement, you know, absent COVID-19, we wouldn't be having this discussion in this context right now. We've had the pool open, we've been going through lessons, we've been doing our, all of our fitness programs that are water-based. Everything is, would have been the same, but this is, it offers a unique opportunity for a facility that, again, that we know is 44 years old, that we've had continual maintenance-related issues and serves comparatively, a relatively small portion of our, our population.
AJ, quick question.
Yes.
And Jan too, again, I, just circling back, that, that number about the percentage of operating costs subsidized by the city, do you have any handle of what other cities look like when it comes to that number? Are we extraordinarily higher on that, on that range? Are we an outlier, or is it kind of within the realm of what other cities do?
And I can weigh in here, it's hard to compare apples to apples on that because again, we are the only indoor public swimming pool. The others of, of, we talked about of Clive, West Des Moines, Ankeny are outdoor, so they have different operating costs, they have different timelines, different expenses for opening, different amenities. So it is quite tough to, to compare apples to apples on that. I, I know that depending on weather for outdoor aquatic facilities is going to be if they're a golden egg or if they're dead for cost recovery. But certainly, cost recovery for outdoor is a lot more favorable than indoor. I think of, that when I've, I've talked to consultants and so forth, they said it's three times as much to build an indoor and three times as much to operate an indoor.
Interesting. I, I see in our numbers that you're excluding from our numbers, the pool, general pool admissions, pool rentals, and two groups, both the swim club and the school. Do you know how many people that is who have used the pool?
Our, our numbers of, I guess duplicated numbers, we've had like 65,000 people enter the building. Now that's a duplicated numbers. I, I don't have, but I can get you, like CIA, Central Iowa Aquatics comes and they might have 50 to 100 kids daily when they come or on the days that they come. And PE is, is six weeks during the year for the middle school. So there are spurts of time that they have frequency, but it's not year-round. And open swim, you know, those numbers we have, again, those are harder to quantify for unduplicated because, one, we're not there for leases for the PE classes or the Central Iowa Aquatics, but also the open swim, it's hard to quantify person because that person could come 72 times during the year and you're duplicating the numbers.
I understand that. I just wanted noted that it, I don't think we can look at the subsidy cost per resident user that's here without considering that we have a lot of residents that use it that aren't included in this number. And you know, some consideration ought to be given to that. I'm not looking for an exact account because I don't think this is a mathematical decision. But if someone does, I think they ought to have all the numbers.
Yeah, you're right. And that's for this report, we thought of, for, it certainly is just program users and not the, the ones that were somewhat easier to quantify. Absolutely, there are certainly other users of the pool. For what it's worth, I do want to mention, as well as AJ had shared, that the boiler, at whatever stage this pool closes, can be repurposed at the fire station. We also, in 2009 and 2013, when we evaluated condition of the pool, the skylight has not, I've been at the city now 22 years, it has not worked since I've been here, but that is deteriorating and we now have small chunks of rusty steel that's falling into the pool. That's not, that won't improve. Replacing that is the tune of $77,000 to $86,000. Obviously, that's not something we're looking to do. And just today, I learned that the air compressor in the boiler room, the HVAC runs under, is the compressor, and there was an issue with that. We're able to fix the leak, but like with most things in our house, and also as our cars get older and, and everything, but this 44-year-old pool, that could last another indefinitely, or that could go tomorrow, but I thought it was ironic today was the issue with that. So just wanted to share that with you.
So Jan, just kind of laying out a, just general concept of, so if the pool doesn't reopen, three staff members, and we put them, you know, lay them off for a period of time until we could bring them back and deliver aquatics to the community through other facilities, whether it's rented facilities or stuff that way. Have we looked at what facilities might allow Park and Rec to use their facility to deliver aquatics?
I guess we have, I mean, I don't mean for private facilities or, or?
Yeah, I mean, we've got a lot of pools, there's a lot of bodies of water in, in 10-mile radius of us, and just didn't know if we'd had any discussions with, whether it's Johnston Schools or Lifetime Fitness or private pools or any of that about delivering aquatics through Park and Rec at them, at their facilities.
What we've talked about with communications with Waukees School District and, and other communities, kind of like ball fields of, of, there's not enough pool time that are currently at those facilities. Even in any partnership that we've talked about potentially, it's, it's programming that prime time. So to say that there is another pool that would have time for us to come in, I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question, but if, if there's another pool that has time for Urbandale Parks and Rec to go on program, I'm quite confident the answer is no, because they're programmed already. But in regards to the staff, like I said, of, depending on the, if it's the length of time and what, Jan Herkey, Park and Rec, of a future facility is probably a number of years out after COVID, whatever happens, the economy needs to rebound, we want to put ourselves in the best possible position for a favorable bond referendum, and who knows who has that crystal ball? But we certainly have had discussions already, the impact certainly will want to take care of our staff, is to whatever capacity we can.
And, and then on those staff, right now, they are not on furlough, correct?
That is correct. We've been, they've been doing the maintenance at the pool. Like I said, we usually close the pool in August, they've been working on that, potential programming, looking at scenarios, recalibrating each time the governor has some updates. So we're confident that if the pool were to close, that within our operations, for example, we are, now we, we've put hold on hiring five summer seasonal park staff. Other, as I mentioned, Cedar Rapids are not opening their five pools, their staff are doing mowing and park things and so forth to keep them whole. Those are some options to consider, and we've talked about already. In the, there's a short-term and a long-term discussion here, but certainly we're looking at options for short-term of what opportunities to keep them whole and keep them in place of the city.
And this is Carla, Councilman Obrich, I would add for you, you'd ask specifically about furlough and right of recall. So the three people that Jan is talking about, one has civil service rights. If she were to be laid off for lack of work because we closed this pool, she would have a three-year right of recall to an aquatic supervisor position. Alternatively, we might be able to, she meets the minimum qualifications for recreation coordinator, we might be able to do something like that. The other two permanent part-time, if we were to lay them off and then reopen the pool, yes, we would, we would bring them back. If we don't ever reopen it, there are no civil service rights. The 29 that are furloughed right now, which include pool cashiers, lifeguards, water safety instructors, water fitness instructors, and assistant pool managers, those would simply get a letter that says, okay, we've moved from a furlough to a layoff.
What sort of commitment do we have to the, making the pool available to Urbandale schools for, for their programming? And what would happen if the pool was not open next school year?
We do an annual lease with them, so we, we evaluate their schedule and, and what's available with our schedule and so forth. So that would be, you know, there's certainly layers of, of implications, and that would be one where it's basically middle school PE, high school doesn't use it as much for their PE, it's the middle school capacity. Elementary school comes very limited as an opportunity, but it would affect mostly middle school PE.
Are we in the middle of a contract, or is that something that gets negotiated over the summer?
It would be renegotiated over the summer, correct?
So we would be able to say, sorry, we're not going to be open this summer?
Correct.
Yeah.
Next year.
Correct.
And just as a point of clarification, we have not had any of those discussions with the school folks at this point in time. Obviously, they've got their hands full with a variety of other things, but if, depending upon the discussions and the ultimate decision by council, we would have to engage them in a relatively quick manner so that they could make alternate arrangements for any type of, of physical education requirements that they've utilized the pool for in the past.
And I think that this was touched on earlier, and I don't know if it was, I missed it or not, for these residents in particular, and I know that I, I had a lot of seniors when I was going door-to-door that specifically like, please don't close the pool, we use it all the time. Have we reached out to, again, like Lifetime Fitness or some of these to see if they're, we as a city could look at a discount or those that we would offset by closing the pool, that they would have an option for like a Urbandale resident fee or level to make sure that they have someplace to go if we do close?
Yes, actually, through the process, if you, I think you received the memo of kind of the timeline of, of discussions in 2008 and then 2013, and, and are we keeping the, we've had about, since I've been here, about four different times, do we keep the pool open, do we close it? We have looked into that even before Lifetime came to Urbandale and the discussion when they were negotiating to, to build here in Urban though, that was a question for them. That wasn't something they were interested in their model. And, and AJ, correct me if I'm wrong, you were a, a big part of those discussions too, but that wasn't something they were interested in. It's certainly something, and again, I, I very preliminary, just brainstorming of potential, could we have discussions with area communities such as Clive and West Des Moines? What could that look like for resident, non-resident fee and what would the city do? But in regards to the private sectors, we have certainly tried to flesh that out numerous times, especially in 2008 and '09, when we were at the stage of, you are required to invest in this pool in order to keep it open for safety reasons. That's where the over half a million dollar investment happened. We had significant discussions with a number of different entities with that exact question and, and that's what we had, the results we had come back with.
Yeah, just when Lifetime Fitness opened in Urbandale, would, I did approach them and asked if there was any interest. And really, the conversation was, we're opening, it's not going to have to be, we don't want that competition with our other members that we're hoping to attract. And they were confident at the time, and I think they probably still are, but that conversation hasn't taken place in the last two years. But when they opened, it was, we don't want to pursue that. We, we don't see that as an advantage for us, and maybe it's just more competition for our pool time that we have with, with our members and people that you may want to bring to the pool. So they, they just, they weren't interested now. That's not to say that that model may not change because of what we're all experiencing now, but certainly, we can re, we can investigate that, but at the time, the information they gave us, they weren't interested. As Jan mentioned, I've had recent conversations with the city of Clive, and for outdoor pools, would they be open to, for a number? For example, they, they charge a entrance fee to everybody regardless of where you live on a daily basis. So if you're going on a, if all you're going to do is go on one day, you go to the entrance fee, you pay it, whether you're a Clive resident or Urbandale or you're from Dallas Center, doesn't matter, you pay that fee. Where their discount or their, their advantage comes into play is when you get a season pass. So they have a resident, non-resident fee. And so our discussions in the past has, if the city were to provide some type of subsidy, would you offer that same residency fee for non-Clive residents, obviously, Urbandale residents to use your pool? And the answer then, and I suspect it would still be, because everybody's still looking for, you know, people putting in through the gate, is that yes, they would. And, and one option was, is that you charge them, if you base it on, base it on zip codes or addresses, if they can determine if they're Urbandale residents, you charge them your Clive rate, and at the end of the summer, you submit to us a list of those individuals who lived in Urbandale that bought a season pass, and we would essentially true that up at the end of the season. So that was part of our earlier discussion, and my guess is that's still an option for us.
I've been around the block a couple of times as a private citizen with this whole discussion and been a thorn in a few of your sides, but I remember Bob saying at a meeting that that amount, God, who knows, I mean, it's been a couple of times that this has gone through, but was like 13,000 or 14,000 dollars to, that's what sticks in my head because.
For us to pay the difference? Are you talking about, are you talking about what, pay the difference? Yeah, yeah.
It was, you know, relatively, we'll say negligible amount of money to subsidize those to the resident rate of Clive. And I think that that's something that we should look at doing regardless of what we decide with the pool, to give our residents an outdoor pool option until we make a bigger decision of what we're going to do. But I just, I think that's a no-brainer if Clive's still interested, is trying to add us on there as a reduced price.
Let's say we'll have a year's discussion because it won't be in 2020.
Well, Stella had a job all lined up, was getting ready to get trained as a lifeguard. At some point, she told me I was going to have to be the one that went in the pool for her to save because they were only going to allow parents to be saved. You couldn't pull anybody else out of the pool. So I'm a little bit excited that I don't have to be a pretend victim. I'm disappointed that she doesn't have a summer job now.
Yeah, and I, and again, as Jan mentioned, they're going to be closer this summer, they may open later in the summer for some lessons, but this does give us a time to, to have that discussion. And, and my guess is, and, and I don't have children who use pools anymore, but my guess is that we have a fair amount of residents who take advantage of going there and buying a season pass. And we can certainly get a number from them, but I would agree that it's probably going to be negligible in the scheme of things, and then it's just an additional service that we can offer. And it is, it's a bridge until there is a decision by the community as to where they want to go, the next level of, of pool, aquatic, fitness, whatever it may be, that they'll have that chance to, to have that gap filled, at least for those who choose to do so.
You know, I served on the committee back in '13, I think, that looked at the pool and was told by two different people at different times that there isn't a municipal pool in the state of Iowa which is liked by the city staff. And I, and I think that's pretty accurate. There's also, our former city manager came up with the plan back in 2008 where, and he talked to our existing gyms that were located in Urbandale, that any Urbandale resident who could prove a, a membership and use per month of three or four times would be subsidized a certain amount per month. And that he could do that and have like a 20 or 30 dollar per month subsidy and come up much cheaper than operating a pool. And I've always thought of that, that that may be a way to promote Urbandale businesses and do it. That time, he, if I remember correctly, he had at least one that was willing to have some verification procedure where they would prove that a person was theirs whatever number of times we elected. So I think there are options to look at. And I think the nicest thing, I, I'm for one, don't want to open our pool under the restrictions, we'd have to operate it this summer when all the city outdoor pools, which at least theoretically should be more open, are closed. I, I think we're going to have lines of people waiting to get in and people who are irate because they can't go over and frolic like they normally want to.
Hey Ron, if we got the 20 dollars a month, your MyPlanet Fitness membership would make us money.
Well, that's what I'm kind of thinking, it might be a retirement plan here, see.
Again, you know, and, and I, I would agree, Ron, that, as I mentioned earlier, that pools are the ultimate white, white elephant. They are there because communities feel that they need to have them for a variety of reasons. Maybe historically, maybe they, they cater to an organization, maybe there's no other option. to an organization, maybe there's no other option in your community, for whatever reason. So, yeah, there, the pools are, again, something that communities, most communities have have done. And again, this, what we're experiencing now, and the fact that it has forced us to close the pool, and along with everybody else, it has taken this issue and take it to the surface, literally, about what are we gonna do when you, as a council, we as a community, have that option to either open or not open? Because again, last week, when the governor lifted the restrictions, and I know it made our folks at the library somewhat anxious because they thought they were going to be inundated by people who wanted to get in the library right away, but the language was, you now have an option, you you are, you can reopen. The option is going to be local. The option's going to be, the state's restrictions are gone, local communities, make up your decision. If you're gonna open your library tomorrow, fine, you have no state restriction. If you're gonna open your pool tomorrow, and again, that's just, it's more of an example than anything else, but that will be a decision that we have. And so, again, based on our best information, there's a lot of hesitation, I would say, Jan, that other pools are are really getting geared up and getting for a summer season. It's it's almost economically suicide to do that for them. And given the fact that I know for the last several years that pools have been scrambling for people. And and maybe that wouldn't be the situation now, but you have to be certified. You just can't walk in off the street and I say, I want to be a lifeguard. There's a certification process you have to go through. And to get that all geared up, unless you have returning people who still have a valid certification, you know, meeting that demand's gonna be very, very tough. I think we've kind of talked around this in a very full way, and the questions have been very good. And again, we didn't expect you to have any particular, you know, decision tonight, but we want to make sure we answer questions and at least give you the folks the opportunity to have that conversation among yourselves about, you know, if we posed the question to you, when that restriction is lifted, do you want to reopen the pool?
Kind of a tangential question, and I don't know that any of you are able to answer this, but it's just a thought that I have. You know, we have the legislature going back into session in a couple of weeks. Is, you know, the the governor has given local authority on most of these things. Is there a chance, given the legislators' tendencies recently to allow cities and other local governments to require, to be required to do certain things? Does that make sense, what I'm asking? They would say, you have to do this in relation to libraries or playgrounds or, I don't know?
Go ahead, Matt.
My guess, and again, from prospect of this, the idea during a critical election year for them to proactively try to, on their own, close very, close things that the public likes, instead of pushing it down to us to make that decision, I just do not see the legislators wanting to proactively.
I'm more concerned about them requiring that we open, you know, if we were to say we're not gonna open the library or the pool or whatever because of our own.
The other way.
Yeah, no, I do, I would never expect them to extend beyond what the governor is requiring. I don't know, it's just something that I thought of, and I think it's happening in some other states, maybe not on this micro level, but.
And again, I know Matt's a little bit closer to it because of his lobbying efforts, but my my experience tells me that they would not. That my experience would tell me that, you know, things like the Americans with Disability Act, that they require cities to adhere to, that's something that's a federal law that's applicable. But to say that cities have to have a library, that they have to have a pool, that they have to do certain voluntary recreational activities to a point of not being able to afford it, I I wouldn't even see that in the best of times. I would think that they would leave that for local decisions, unless there was some kind of federal leverage that they wanted to use to say that you have to do this. And I I just think that would be, I would, I wouldn't see that coming. And I just really wouldn't. And and again, absent election year or not, I just, I I can't fathom that they would come in and say, City of Urbendale, or City of Des Moines, or City of Dubuque, or whomever you are, you're going to have to have a pool. And then what would you do with the other cities that don't have pools? There's plenty of that don't have a pool. And plenty of that don't have a library. So I think that would be very improbable.
AJ, just a quick question from us. When, when do you foresee us having to make a decision on this, in particular, the opening and closing?
Well, just what Jan and I were thinking, that we thought you would probably have until the second or third week of June, quite honestly. If the restrictions are lifted, and she follows a timeframe that after the twenty seventh of May, that those restrictions are lifted, that there is going to be a natural period that people would have to gear up or make some decision. And I think based on, again, Dan jumped in, that it appears the second to third week of June seems to be, if they haven't made a decision now, that that appears to be mid-June that most of them will make a decision by.
Yes, I'd anticipate that. And right now, like I said, of of what's recommended from staff is to close it at least through July sixth, which is consistent with on West Des Moines and and Clive. Clive obviously not opening, but at least pushing it to that date so we can make plans accordingly. But yes, mid-June probably would be a helpful date to to make more significant decisions.
All right.
Hey, Jan, I was all geared up to join the committee meetings in March that you had put together with the Parks Board and some other folks related to the Quality of Life Bond Referendum. Where, is that just indefinitely on hold?
I would anticipate, yes. I think that's, like you said, AJ had said of, of that's a further discussion. I know you have one minute till your your regular council meeting starts, but yes, right now, it's a pause. I think with everything going on, Bond Referendum is not realistic for a timeframe.
All right. I'm going to ask that we adjourn this meeting and wait till six o'clock and we'll convene regular city council meeting.
This is Ron, I'd move to adjourn.
My Poggy. My Blake, discussion roll call.
Poggy?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Harbury Montgomery?
Yes.
Obrecht?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
All right. I'm now going to call to order the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty, and ask Nicole to take roll for the meeting.
Have you give me just a moment here to get reset?
Absolutely.
And while in doing that, if I could ask the council members to pull up their iPads, we'll give that voting a try again here. Okay, get my screen in order here. See, excellent. Okay, so for this one, I'll, okay, I think if I could have you each look and see if you are connected. I see a little green check next to everyone except for Councilmember Russell.
I'm hearing you. I thought I was connected.
Did you sign on to the the Agenda Notes, so Dave, to vote?
On the, on the city.
On the Agenda Notes app, so you can vote on there?
Let's see. Yeah, that's how I got on in the first place. Let me see. I'll go ahead and back off and try to get back on then.
Well, you're you're on WebEx here for the meeting, but you you have to be on the app. Are you on that, David?
On Zoom.
No, you're fine on, no, you're fine on WebEx, but there's also the the Agenda Notes app that has the agenda and all the council notes and everything. That's where you vote.
Yeah, I thought I was on that already.
Okay.
It's not coming up. All I have on my screen is just the agenda itself.
Well, through the, through the WebEx app or through the?
WebEx app, yes.
Okay, but you're not, you're not signed into the Agenda Notes, the iCompass Agenda Notes app as well?
I thought it was.
Okay. Well.
I'm gonna go ahead and back out and then come back on. Let's see what happens.
You don't need to back out of this necessarily. Just, can you, are you, are you on the, you're not using a separate computer, you're just using the iPad for everything?
Right. But I can, I can go on. Let's see, where is that at? I want to go to the other iPad now and pull up the agenda that Nicole sent. I can find it here.
Okay, but if you're in in the app.
Let's see what happens here.
We could potentially move forward just with a a voice vote for Calvary Montgomery.
Yeah, now I have a, now I have one.
I can't hear you, Dave.
I'll just have to do a vote, a vote for you.
Are you in WebEx on two devices? I think you are.
Yes.
Okay, you need to be just in WebEx on one device, but you need to be in Agenda Notes as well.
Oh, here, I'm going to.
Back, back out or? The WebEx on one device.
Yeah. I just shut that one down.
Okay, but then you need to be in Agenda Notes so you can vote.
Well, I'm not sure I know how to get into the Agenda Notes.
That's the app that we use that, it's, it should be the special app on your iPad that has, that's where the agenda and all of the council documents are contained.
You say my iPad, you're talking about the city iPad.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm on. And the only thing I have is the agenda.
So you're, oh, okay. Are you looking at Nicole's agenda or are you looking at?
Nicole's agenda, yes.
All right, well, all right, well, well, I don't know if we're gonna be able to talk you through this tonight, but let's, maybe you can just do a voice vote and then we'll, we can get you through it. But you need to be in the app in order to vote electronically versus doing a voice vote, so.
That's what I was gonna do. I was just gonna shut out and come back in on the app.
Well, but then, okay.
Let's just go forward. Let's just keep moving.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You need to be in WebEx to participate by voice and by your video, but you need to also have that app open as well to be able to vote. So, all right, let's, let's get started. You're not, is he showing in there yet, Nicole?
Um, no, not yet, but it'll update when that happens, and we can voice vote until, until that time. So I'll go ahead and do roll call for you. Blake? Harbury Montgomery?
Here.
Obrecht?
Here.
Poggy?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's, please, standing if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Urbendale is a national leader in character counts endeavoring in all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants elect in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Item three, or excuse me, item two is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion for that, please?
I did send it through the app. I have a motion by Obrecht and a second by Poggy to approve the agenda.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
I'm an A, I'm a yes, not an A.
I'm a yes.
Almost defeated it.
Yeah, now it came on.
Success. Okay.
I think I'm getting the voting through on mine now.
Okay, good.
And that passed five, five votes for A.
All right, thank you.
And three citizens forum, this is the opportunity to address the council on something not a part of tonight's regular agenda. Bridget, did you have anybody that, or Nicole, excuse me, did you have anybody that had registered to vote to discuss ahead of time?
I did not have anyone ahead of time. If you'll give me just a moment, I'll unmute our call-in users if anyone on the phone would like to comment.
So.
And I thought Bob Brownell had mentioned to me earlier this, what you might be here on. Bob, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Sure. I recognize you first, like, and. From the county standpoint.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council, Robert Brownell, Polk County Board of Supervisors. Thought I'd give you a little bit of update on what's going on with the county and what's going on metrowide. You guys, of course, have been very instrumental in the economic recovery package that's been put together. And the last I heard, Urbendale had around thirty-four, thirty-five apps active right now. I don't know who they are. I think they've been communicating Curtis or AJ as to who those applicants are and other cities as well. But the response has been pretty good. As of Friday night, there's one hundred and eighty-five apps and eastern part of Polk County has, you might have read the paper, kind of small businesses program going. So everybody's kind of involved rather than Ankeny's right at the moment. So, but we appreciate your involvement in this. Thought I kind of talk about where, what we're doing and what, what, what things are looking like for us, very briefly. I won't get in the weeds with you too much about this. But there's been a lot of talk about, you know, Prairie Meadows being shut down and the arena being shut down and how that affected the county. Actually, we, we don't use Prairie Meadows' money or or our money we make off Wells Fargo Arena or Ivy Hall for operational issues anyway. The Iowa Event Center money that they make, the profit they make, which is usually a couple million dollars, goes back into the facility to upgrade it and update it and so on. This year, it looks like they're gonna, they're gonna lose about three hundred thousand because of the lack of of performances and meetings and so forth. I'm sure you can imagine what that looks like down there. But they had a reserve fund that's gonna cover all that, so we won't have to use any county money to support them like we used to back when we had vets in the complex. We had to support them. It's turned to one point two million a year. So even in spite of all this, we don't have to pump any money into Iowa Event Center. Debt piece of it, this being funded through Prairie Meadows will continue to be paid. We pay that out of a rent lease on Prairie Meadows, the buildings and the land, which we get a monthly payment for. which we get a monthly payment for and that that um revenue stream will stay intact, so there's no no chance of losing that, that's the big uh getting back to Prairie Meadows for a minute. Even though we don't use gambling money, uh we have a formula for besides the lease we get of what we share. Uh, even though we don't use that for operational money, it does have an effect on hotel motel taxes, can have an effect on the grants and it goes to charities and nonprofits, which all of them are in trouble right now, I think, because their uh contributions and those kinds of things are way off. So that's unfortunate, but um I'm sure the state would like to get the casinos open again, but we're not sure when that's gonna be optimistically, probably mid-June at best, we'll we'll see where that goes, uh but we're not counting on it. We've got several other things that that have an effect on our overall um standing, I guess, finance standing. And we've put about, it looks just like what we're adding up is about, because of COVID, we put about four point two million dollars into COVID related issues. I'll get into what some of those are just briefly and on kind of surface level, but uh is one of the things that's being affected by this, uh Hilton Hotel. Uh, obviously, the occupancy is way down and the way this is financed is through basically a sales tax TIF called the Iowa Reinvestment Act. And since there that TIF, uh that that area that's used for the sales taxes is basically downtown Des Moines where there's nothing going on right at the moment, really, in terms of retail sales. So that's having an effect on the revenue stream, so we may be called upon to um help finance uh bond payment there. That could be one point five million uh around July first, we'll wait and see what happens, we think that there's some um some FEMA money than some other uh federal money that may come into play there, but right now it looks like we may have to pay that. General assistance is a is a piece that we use for um rent assistance and utilities assistance. We've improved the improve, I guess is one word for it, improve the act eligibility for that from a hundred percent of poverty to a hundred and fifty percent of poverty. Uh, so more people are available because there's more people that are needing it. Uh, that's running about thirty thousand per week additional than what we planned on before. And we think that's around about thirty six, three hundred sixty thousand, so that's something that, you know, we've COVID related, but um it's something we're doing. We have a temporary shelter at the fairgrounds for to house homeless people and and some others too, actually, who have tested positive for COVID where they can quarantine, if they don't have a home, they can do it, or or a home that allows them to quarantine, so we've got staff and and an environment out there, the fairgrounds to do that. That's costing us about a hundred thousand dollars to set up and it costs about twenty six thousand per week additional. Um, alternative housing for the homeless, we've taken uh I don't know how many here, let's see, it looks like about a hundred people out of the homeless shelter in Off River Banks, put them in hotels in Clive and West Des Moines, Urbain Dell for a while. And uh some of the ones in in West Des Moines were taken out of the West Des Moines Valley West End and uh putting them in the long term permanent housing, so, you know, some of those folks will never go back to the shelter, which should be good if we can pull that off. We're trying to do that, that's costing uh about weekly costs is about fifteen thousand dollars per week. So the big the big number and all that is a lot of money, obviously, I won't get into all of this stuff, some of it's reimbursable by the federal government uh due to COVID, some of it's not. The big number, though, that we're really concerned about is mental health, because there's gonna be a mental health bubble that's gonna come along behind all this. And I've said before, if you're kind of prone to depression and anxiety because of isolation and these kinds of things, this is not a good time for you and uh we're mental health issues pop up and and unfortunately, we're not seeing a lot of mental health issues pop up because we're just not aware of them and and that could be in the area of child abuse where uh in the children that are being abused oftentimes are identified by teachers. And since school isn't in session, we're a lot of, I mean, law enforcement and others are just aren't aware of what's going on, so uh that's gonna be something that that will, you know, probably have a delayed reaction to it. But um the state normally is cooperating with us on working with mental health funding. We're gonna be short of our mental health budget by about thirteen million dollars this year. Normally, we get help from broad lawns, broad lawns is is been, you know, under the gun too financially. So we may not have help from them, if we have to put that twelve million of our own into it out of reserves, that'll dig into our twenty five percent uh that keeps our triple A bond rating intact and causes higher interest rates, obviously, if we have to dig into that. So we're hoping for some assistance from the uh the legislature and what I'll say about the legislature at this point, in case you don't know, they have approaching a billion dollars in surplus and two point two billion that they receive from the federal government, none of which is planned right now to go to cities and counties. Uh, unless they set up a program over the next session here that they're gonna have on June third. Uh, we'll see about that, but twelve million dollars doesn't seem to me to be a much of a very heavy lift for mental health to be uh accomplished in Polk County out of the amount of monies and reserves of the state, but we'll see how far we get with that. Um, on the on the kind of good news front, I guess, the uh state's COVID numbers, we keep track of the COVID numbers every day, different different kinds of numbers. Something we track is not new cases, obviously. Uh, the new cases, I don't know if you can see this or not. No, you can't, I look my little box around, so you can't see it, but the cases are, they spike, it's kind of a sawtooth graph, it's a line graph, it's kind of sawtooth. But it starts a high of about sixteen days ago, seven hundred fifty, seven hundred fifty seven new cases. It's down to about three hundred and four today. Now, it goes up and down, it's there's high days and low days, but the overall track is is lower and that's that's a good thing. Uh, another number we look at closely is how many days does it take to double your number? What what makes it exponential? About ten days ago, the county, the state was at about twelve days, now they're pushing twenty days, so that's good. The county ten days ago was between six and seven days to double, now it's running about fourteen to fifteen, so that's a good number, even though the county is hitting a lot of cases. Um, we are actually uh seeing a slowing of that, even though it's hard to tell by not by just measuring new cases. The number, the time it's taken to uh to double the cases is taking longer, which is a good thing. Hospitalizations have kind of leveled out in the state, running about three hundred and eighty or so right now and uh that that number hasn't really gone up because people are checking in at the rate of about between twenty and forty people, it's probably high, maybe twenty five and thirty five people per day get get hospitalized. But a number or equal to that or more is are leaving the hospital, so. Uh, but we know that Unity Point's looking for their peak week this week. So we'll see uh how that turns out for them, but uh those numbers are not looking too bad. Um, I guess I'll finish up with that uh with that comment. Um, the budget for Polk County, I hope I didn't make it sound too grim because we had strong reserves going into this, uh we had hoped to have a fifteen cent uh reduction of the levy. Um, both Democrats, Republicans came together on that and thought that that was probably, we probably need the firepower to deal with COVID back last February, March, and I think we turned that turned out to be right. Like I said, we're into the COVID for about four point two million dollars and that's about that fifteen cents. So wish we could have done it, I was looking for something more than fifteen cents, but you know, these these uh circumstances occur and we have to deal with them and uh I I think we've dealt with it pretty effectively. We do have a health department that's done a great job, I think, emergency operations department's done a great job uh along with the Urbain Dell folks that attend the EOC, includes the mayor and some council members. Um, Matt and I have worked a little bit with um Matt Blake and I have worked a little bit with uh our health director on some issues and uh we hope we've been responsive to everybody. Uh, but I think some things we've done with the homeless have proved out to be good, I think some things we've done with the immigrant population turned out to be good. And some things we've done with the general assistance folks have turned out to be good, we're not gonna make everybody happy. We're not gonna make everybody solve everybody's problems, but I think we've made things a little bit better for some people and and hopefully, um, you know, this we put this behind us at some point and and uh return to some semblance of normal. So anyway, thanks so much, Bob, for and the council for letting me talk tonight and uh I'll just leave you with any questions you might have and try to answer them.
Hi, question. Um. I think what you're doing at the fairgrounds uh is great. Um, giving uh the homeless an opportunity to be able to isolate out there, but the number seems uh pretty high, how many um folks are you serving out there for twenty six thousand a week?
That's a good question, Bridget, we're serving, we have about twenty seven out there right now, we've got room for four hundred. Uh, so it's a good problem to have that we don't have four hundred, obviously, but we had prepared for four hundred. The cost comes in of having to provide food, obviously, for the people are there, but also paying the staff is there, which we pay for. And we had to pay for the renovation of the building and so forth, so. So, but we have twenty seven folks out there right now, um everybody we've had out there so far has recovered, they haven't had to go to the hospital. And uh so hopefully, that's the case with this this twenty five, twenty seven people that we've got out there now.
So you've moved people in and out as they've recovered?
Yeah, we started off for a long time, we had none in there and then we had two homeless that came in, quarantined, both recovered, didn't have to go to the hospital and went back to the hotel and then that's been the case with the rest of the folks that have come in. Now, since Polk County has spiked over the last couple of weeks, uh we've had more people at the fairgrounds because we've had more people test positive. Where we get kind of uh, I don't know, let's say we question, we don't question ourselves, it's just that we kind of set it up with the homeless to uh to quarantine, but there are immigrant families that live in multi generational homes where you have maybe ten or eleven people in one home where so it's difficult for the immigrant person that has COVID isolate and quarantine, so we've offered that to some of those folks, they don't want to do it, they want to stay home with their families, so it's a little bit of a cultural thing. We've made it available to other folks that can that don't have a place to quarantine. We've had a few take take advantage of it, not a lot, but it's mostly for homeless right now. It seems to be working.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Any any questions, any other questions for Bob from the council?
I just want to take a moment to thank Bob publicly for the help that he he assisted on in some nursing home things, I know you mentioned that, but I want to say thank you, Bob, I appreciate that.
Anytime, Pat, and if you if we need any follow up on that, let me know.
All right. All right, great. Thank you, Bob, for the update.
Thanks for having me.
And we are still in citizens forum, uh is there anyone else at this time that would like to address the council on something that's not a part of tonight's agenda? Not hearing any, we will move on. Item four is the adoption of the minutes, the first is item four point one for the minutes for the May five meeting.
The motion by Poggy.
Second.
And second by Blake.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Yes, here, Nicole, it's not coming up on my iPad.
I can do it for you on this side.
There it is.
It's huge. Has it passed?
Thank you, that passes. And four point two then is the minutes from the uh May twelve meeting.
A motion by Obrak. And a second by Blake.
Further discussion? If not, please vote.
Julie and I. Bridget.
And Russell?
It's not coming up, the tally comes up, but I can't vote yes or no, but the results come on the screen.
Yeah. I I again, I think you're seeing that through the WebEx, we'll have to walk you through the the other one here after the I think what you're seeing is the the results that pop up on the WebEx, everybody can see, so we'll we'll get you through it after this.
I'll take a voice vote for you, Councilman Russell.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. I don't know why these results are so huge.
Yeah, I see that now.
Yeah, see, that's coming up through the WebEx, so anyway, we'll get through it, we'll just have you do voice vote tonight, so. Okay, uh, item five is the consent agenda, we have item eight items for approval.
A motion by Poggy. Second by Carberry Montgomery.
You've heard the discussion? Not, please vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes, thank you. All right, uh, item six is public hearings versus item six point one, which is the public hearing that was continued from the previous meeting. Uh, as noted, the we will, this will be with Ron, but we still need a motion to close the public hearing. As for that, at this time.
The motion by Obrak. Second by Poggy.
Thank you, any further discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
I was gonna ask a question. It doesn't change my vote, it doesn't change my vote at all. Are you getting back to us AJ in a period of time with a new plan?
Right now, based on the conversation we had last time, it was obvious that the council did not want to support the salt. So what we're doing is that um they are working with the architect to come up with a plan for the uh another, basically a building that would have some limited cold storage, an area for a break room for our employees who to go out there to, and it would be at the site that was outlined in the description last time, that the back of the building would be facing the area over near where the Hubble development is off of Waterford. So they're in the process of doing that now, you know, basically, as we discussed uh last time, that we are limited at seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there, we've double checked with our bond consultant and that is not an issue that we can make any other adjustments on. When we did the general election uh for the fire station, it was a fire station and the fueling station. They were linked together because the fuel was needed to service the fire department. So the buildings that we had proposed were part of kind of phase two and that was limited by the seven hundred thousand. Uh, we are not going to be pursuing the salt dome, uh and we are now dropping the PUD amendment request and that the plans that we will be submitted for for the storage building itself and the maintenance building uh will be within the seven hundred thousand dollars and we will take the comments that we heard concerning the aesthetic value of the building uh in our design process.
Thank you, and I vote yes, I don't know why it's coming up as no.
All right, we show five yes, that passes. Thank you. Item six point two is a public hearing to consider the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget amendment number one, the public notice for this is published in the May eighth, two thousand twenty Des Moines Register and I'll ask Nicole, are there any objections to that notice as published?
There were none.
Okay, may, I'll have an ask for a motion then to open the public hearing.
The motion by Blake. And a second by Poggy.
Okay, discussion, if not, please vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes, thank you. Uh, to introduce you items, our finance director, Nikki Lamb, Nikki, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay.
You're good.
Um, so tonight we have, this is our first and only amendment for this budget here. Um, the total budget, I mean, you see all of my notes in the council letter, but just kind of want to walk through those the couple of new folks, the number seems kind of big, five point two five one million dollars. Um, and the reason for that is because of the transfers for our retirement of those bonds that we are calling and paying off, so the reason that is high is because I have one point nine nine five million dollars to pay off those two outstanding bonds, but that actually reflects twice because we have to transfer it out of one fund and then spend the debt service out of the actual debt service fund, so it's actual four million of that is related to the the pay down on our debt service levy, so just to walk through the main pieces of that, um on the expenditure side, like I said, it's five point two million dollars. Um, each function of the budget, as you're used to going through the budget process that we've seen um there in January, each function is how we have to amend legally, so within each function, public safety, we're amending by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The majority of that uh you saw come through a little earlier in the year, the GEMT, which is um ground emergency management transportation, don't quote me on that, and I don't see Jerry on the call to what the GEMT is, it's that difference from Medicare payments to make um the city hole on ambulance and EMS services, but it's about the grand ground transport, so they're paying a difference to that. The unique piece of that is we actually have to remit a portion of that to the state and we did not know that that was coming, so those uh ninety thousand of it is related to the payments out. and we did not know that that was coming. So those, uh, 90,000 of it is related to the payments out that we have to share those, uh, revenues with the state. So 90,000 of the 120 is related to that. Um, the other pieces, 20,000 in police and 10,000 in, uh, fire related to donations. Both of those are offsetting revenues, so no general fund, uh, or no fund balance usage on either of those. Community, culture and recreation functions, um, have an increase of 841,740 dollars. The majority of that, um, a couple of different pieces, I guess, the Enrich Iowa Library Grant, which is our normal. This is 12,740 of that to true it up to what we actually receive from the state. Um, the Dunlap Arboretum improvements, that is, um, matching funds from the foundation for 64,000. And then the Miracle League Playground is the biggest piece of that, 765,000. We were being aggressive on the amount in the event it actually got done before the end of the fiscal year. So that is the full cost. We don't actually think it'll probably all go out, but I legally can't spend it unless I amend. So we went ahead and amended for the full amount. All of that having offsetting revenues. Community Economic Development, um, is a small one. They did get a grant, um, 1,940 dollars. So we go ahead and run through the grant revenue and related marketing expense on that one. Uh, the transfers and debt service, that's on both sides, 1.995. We already talked about that for the two outstanding bonds. Um, the offsetting revenue from that is for, from the Polk County lost, uh, funds that are coming in. And then we have, uh, $50,000 in our business type, which, um, in this case is our Stormwater Utility Fund. That's what shows up down in that, uh, category. And then the transfers is, um, 248,000 is moving from capitals into the Miracle League Special Revenue Fund. That's, uh, where the majority of the, uh, donations were received into, so we're spending all of the funds out of one fund. So that's why there was a move in that one as well. So total, as I mentioned, 5.251 and, uh, million dollars, and then the revenue side of that is 4.783. Um, so the net difference is that 468,000 dollars, uh, of fund balance usage, and that's coming from capital into Miracle League and the use also of Miracle League Fund, which was revenue from the previous year from the donations we received. So just finally getting those out the door. Um, so in front of you is the actual amendment that it was published, um, and this gets filed with the state so that, uh, it has to be filed on, by June 1st, so they have 30 days to appeal. Um, so that's just the procedure for this, and then it gets, um, posted and we're free to spin after it is approved tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions from Nicole from the council? All right, uh, hearing done from the council, we are in public hearing on this matter. So is there anyone, uh, from the public that would like to, uh, comment on this at all?
I have not received any one in the chat or ahead of time.
All right. You have the phone lines opened up?
Yes, any of my call-in users should be able to unmute at this time if they'd like to speak.
All right, so hearing done, uh, I will then ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, give me just a moment. We'll send that for votes. A motion by Blake. Uh, second by Pogi to close the public hearing.
Discussion? Uh, please vote.
And Russell?
Yes, on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we have a motion on, on the item itself.
A motion by Blake. And second by Obrak to approve resolution 122, 2020.
Discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
Thank you. And Carberry Montgomery. Oh, excellent. Thank you.
That passes, thank you. All right, uh, moving on, item seven, uh, establish public hearings versus item 7.1 to establish a public hearing to vacate a portion of the public walkway easement on Lot 1, Shern Heights Platte 11 at 4721. Place. Your motion.
A motion by Obrak. And second by Pogi.
Discussion? Please vote.
Yes, Russell.
Thank you.
That passes, thank you. Item 7.1, establish a public hearing for the Walnut Creek parking improvements. Your motion.
A motion by Blake. And second by Obrak to approve resolution 119, 2020.
Discussion? Please vote.
Russell, yes.
Thank you.
That passes, thank you. Item 7.3 is to establish a public hearing for the City Hall HVAC renovation. AJ, did you want to add anything to this?
No, except for that we're asking for this to be withdrawn at this point in time. We did our early estimates based on inju-, uh, our solicitation from estimates from contractors, and we had, uh, $270,000 in our CIP for that work to be completed. Our latest estimate is at 418,300 dollars, so 148,300 dollars over our estimate. We're asking that this be removed and that we'll reevaluate it at the, the time and default and CIP review and consideration. Um, we thought we had, uh, a good timing on this. We thought our numbers were solid, but, um, for variety of reasons, we're still investigating whether it's the cost of material, whether there's unavailability of the labor to do the work. Whatever the cause is, is that it came in significantly higher, and, uh, we cannot, in all good conscience, present this for you to take this forward for any type of, of formal action. So we're requesting that, staff's requesting that it be withdrawn from the agenda, and we'll reevaluate it come the time at CIP.
Okay, thank you.
AJ, quick question on this, though, is the repairs, there's, by not doing the repairs, we aren't creating any, um, harmful environment in the city hall, are we?
No, we're just have a level of comfort. Um, and this is on the administrative side, and, uh, everybody jokes that they like, I was, I was the main promulgator of this because I like an awfully warm office in the winter. But at the same time, um, it dealt with, uh, humidity levels in the hallway. The air conditioning seems to work at times, so we'll just, we'll work our way through it this year, but we'll be presenting it once again in our CIP document. Um, but it's manageable, but there's no real significant health risk to our employees.
All right. We'll move on then. So we'll move on to item eight, planning zoning items. First is item 8.1, Highland Meadows Platte 2 preliminary platetime extension for 164 Street and North Park Drive. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will put a drawing up for you here, hopefully. You should be seeing, there we go, Platte 2. Uh, both this item and the following item are preliminary plats that were originally approved back in 2016. The property owner at that time, the developer, uh, was out of state, uh, for a variety of reasons, never pulled the trigger on construction, then finally decided to sell the properties, and there was a lawsuit, uh, that needed to be settled. That's all been cleared away now. It is under new ownership, and so they are moving forward with this plat, uh, and the next item, Platte, uh, 4, uh, as originally approved back in 2016. So this is Platte 2 that you can see here on your screen. It's a smaller plat, uh, consists of just 15 lots, uh, and then ends in a cul-de-sac here to the north. Uh, involves an extension of, um, Plum Drive to the west, and then an orderly extension of 162nd Street. So Planning Zoning Commission recommends approval subject to very small number of items because everything was pretty well squared away back in 2016. So be happy to answer any questions. Oh, you know what? I just discovered. I'm sorry. I am showing you Platte 4. I apologize. Let me, you got an advanced look at that one. Same thing. This is Platte 2. My apologies. This is Platte 2, uh, and, you know, same area, same PUD, very close to each other. Platte 4 is down here to the south and the east. This is 46 single-family lots, all about 75 feet wide. My apologies.
No problem. All right. Thank you, Steve. Any, any questions for Steve? Is there a motion?
Give me just a moment to steal back control from Steve here. Okay. A motion by Blake. And a second by Pogi to approve Highland Meadows Platte 2 preliminary platetime extension.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Russell is yes.
Thank you.
That passes, thank you. Item 8.2 is the Highland Meadows Platte 4 preliminary platetime extension. And I think, Steve, you pretty well explained it. Anything further to add on this one?
No, nothing further unless you've got questions. 15 lots.
All right. I'll ask for a motion on the same.
No motion by Obrak. Second by Blake to approve Highland Meadows Platte 4 preliminary platetime extension.
Further discussion? Please vote.
Uh, my no vote should be a yay.
Hammond?
Russell's yes.
Thank you.
That passes, thank you. All right, uh, moving on, item nine, regular agenda items versus item 9.1, the council approval of the exceptions for the emergency proclamation. AJ?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of council. When COVID-19 hit and the mayor submitted and you approved an emergency proclamation, uh, part of that discussion, at least internally, was to address, uh, issues associated with local businesses about how they were going to, um, continue to serve the public for those that were still open. And as incrementally as openings have taken place over the last several weeks, I'm sure you've noticed more signage out in the public right-of-way or on private property that is not typically the norm here in the city of Urbandale. And one of the things that we did is that we suspended through the end of May permitting requirements for temporary signs that you're set, happen to see, whether they be an A-frame, whether they be a cardboard sign out in the, in the public view. And the only restrictions we had is that they couldn't block or create a traffic problem at the entrance of a driveway or any inhibiting, inhibiting factor for the driving public. And so we also waived the fees associated with any of those temporary signage. Uh, this does not apply to the regular signage that goes along with typical buildings and businesses. And so we're at that time period where we were, our 30 days or that time period is getting ended, and we're at the last meeting in May for the council to consider. So, um, one of the things that we looked retroactively was that we needed council's permission because there was fees assigned to this, that we needed council's permission to waive those fees. That, um, placement was, again, one part of it, but waiving the temporary fees was another. And so under the advice of the city attorney, that it needed to have council's permission to do so. And that's something that we had presented to you previously, and it appeared that there was consensus by council that that was something that you wanted to do, uh, to assist our local businesses during this very unusual time. So the resolution before you is to, uh, retroactively approve the, uh, absence of those fees and the action that we've already taken. I would also add that there's been conversation about what next, and kind of an all-inclusive that we'd like to include in this resolution, as it probably would be needed to be amended, was to allow for administrative, administratively, give myself the authority through this office to continue to grant the waiver of those fees for temporary signs and the placements in the public right-of-way for the businesses that are starting to come out of the COVID-19 shell. Um, I will say that, uh, I did not have any extensive discussion with staff, and our, our community development director, Steve Franklin, has done a quick survey. It seems that other cities are, uh, are allowing for, or they're going to end their, uh, permission to do so, or they're going to allow just for a short window. Suggesting 60 days, which is probably contrary to what, uh, staff would recommend, but I think that 60 days gives us well into the month of Ja-, of July to deal with recovery for our local businesses. And at that time, that period would, would expire, and we're hoping that, uh, it would be reasonable that, you know, those businesses that are reopened have reestablished their client base. So again, I would add that as, if the council would consider that as a, an amendment to this original resolution to give administrative authority for the next 60 days as well.
Uh, let me add, uh, AJ, that I would be in favor of that. I've received an email from Tiffany Minke of the Chamber. She has also sent to me a copy of the survey that she has sent to businesses throughout Urbandale. And according to the survey as well, there are several businesses in Urbandale that have requested that we extend this. So I certainly would be in favor of allowing you that discretion to extend it. Uh, and you, I think you want up until, uh, an additional 60 days. And I think in, in view of what, uh, the small businesses in Urbandale have been going through, what they will be going through, that 60 more days certainly is in order.
I would also add that, you know, I know previous to our discussion, I know, I believe it was Councilmember Blake asked that we do as much as we can to assist the local businesses, and quite honestly, there is not quite, quite a lot that we can do that was within our power. You know, we can't, we can't, uh, vacate your property taxes, we can't vacate your water bill. Uh, but I know through Curtis's efforts, uh, and on the economic development side, they helped to promote the, uh, grant program that the supervisor, Bronell, made reference to. I think that was been a, a big boost, and I, the signage is, is little. Uh, and again, it doesn't seem that big, but at the same time, uh, as these folks do come crawling out of this COVID rock, they want to be able to get that, that word out. Uh, again, I still want to, to acknowledge that, you know, this is only temporary, and that once that 60 days expires, unless there are extenuating circumstances that we're not aware of now, that we would let that expire and that we would, uh, we would seek compliance from those businesses to remove those signs, and the fees would then come back into play.
I guess, AJ, if we just amend that last line that says through May 31st to say July 31st, doesn't that also kind of just basically do what you're asking? And we, we've extended it and July 31st is the date, and if we need to go beyond that, then we got to go back for approval?
Yes, I mean, I, I didn't want to get myself too far ahead of this, but at the same time, I thought 60 days would be reasonable. And, and again, as, as Steve's survey would show out, and again, that was done later this afternoon, that it, it's a variety. We'd probably be on the, on the more generous side of the metro on this issue. Um, but again, we're on uncharted ways here, and, uh, I guess in this particular hearing, I'd rather err on the side of being too generous than being too restrictive. And that again is just my own personal opinion, but I think it's, it's warranted.
I guess I'd make the motion to approve, uh, council letter 6337 with the amendment of taking the side and ordinance out through July 31st.
Second by Blake, we're doing it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I am glad that we are extending the, um, the date. I think, um, it's an easy, easy ask for us. And if you can't quite hear me, it's because of all that pavement reconstruction in front of my house that's going on as we speak. It's beautiful. I mean, it's literally out my window right now, so.
Well, they'll be in front of my house soon, Bridgette, so.
We'll make sure you get your car out when they're right in front of your driveway.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll ask for the vote.
Russell, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That passes. And I know Tiffany's on here as well, and I know she reached out. Dave, thanks for your comments. I know she reached out. I think they were to everybody today, and I certainly had some correspondence with her on this as well. So again, I think I appreciate the council's support on this. And I think this is, as you folks have said, this is a, something that we can easily do. And I think we need to be supporting our local businesses at this time. And I think this demonstrates our commitment to local business, not only the, you know, our previous action on the small business loan that we've done, or the small business grant program, but also these actions are very meaningful too. And they may not seem like what much, but they really do make a big difference. So thanks for everybody's support on this. All right. Then we'll move on to item 9.2, the Honorable Urbandale City Plan for Recovery from COVID-19. AJ?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council. I guess we like to think a little bit that half, the glass half full capacity, that there is a recovery from COVID-19. Previously, we had distributed a draft plan to you and obviously with the word draft on it, it was an accumulation of ideas and issues that we had talked about at a staff level. Before I get too far into the weeds, I'd like to thank Assistant City Manager Curtis Brown for all the work that he's done on putting this document together. Also, this has been vetted through all of our directors and we've asked for their comments on it. And if we, as we put the draft together, as I mentioned earlier to council, you know, the wonderful thing about the public sector, there is no copyright provisions. And so we've looked at other communities and we've tried to, and through our conversations that we've had with our peers, we've tried to piece together about how people are going about planning for the, as we work our way through this, as we work our way through the COVID-19, the reopening of facilities, the reopening of service availability, all those things that were in play before the world stopped for us nine, eight, nine weeks ago. And so we thought it would be important to have at least a plan out there and for us internally to follow and for us to share with the community that we have thought about items and issues that impact their life as part of the delivery of service. Now, some of the things obviously hasn't changed. From the public safety perspective, our level of service has remained consistent. We answer our 911 calls. We've become much more cognizant about, particularly on the emergency medical side, about the type of calls and how we prepare to address those levels of services for potential COVID patients. But again, in general, police and fire and EMS services have remained the same. Everything else in our, pardon me, our refuse collection has stayed the same. We've geared back up our full-time recreation activities as far, recreation maintenance activities, park maintenance activities. That was May 6th. And beginning on the 18th, we brought back our public works crew from their staggered shift to a full shift to address outside maintenance related issues. So those are programs that we felt would, would continue to provide the level of service that is necessary to support our services, but also that was a minimal risk to our employees and to the residents as far as any type of contamination through the virus. But the plan itself, again, as I mentioned, has been vetted through all of our department heads. They've all added comments or directives to it. And it gives us an outline of how we are going to re-enter, if you will, re-enter the level of services that we provide. And even though our first initial was draft, I would also highlight that the program that we have outlined is still subject to changes, changes that are dictated either at the state or federal level or circumstances that present themselves that the city council determines that in the best interest of our residents, of our employees, and the level of service that we provide, these plans have to be altered. And as we indicated early in our discussions and when the COVID-19 issues presented themselves, we modeled some of our response and how we structured how we were going to respond and react to state and federal plans, particularly those issued by the CDC, the State Department of Health, other health and emergency professionals who could outline a plan of phases one, two, and three. And so again, we thought it would be appropriate to accumulate all of that into a plan that could be easily identifiable, share with our residents to demonstrate that in fact, we do know what we're doing as best we can and that we are being as proactive as possible as to identify how we're going to navigate through the current situation and how we begin to present ourselves for coming out of this and reacting to a level of service that our citizens and residents were accustomed to prior to the mid-March when all of this kind of settled in on us. Again, we, this is the, the second iteration that you've received. I'd be happy to answer questions. I know Curtis is on the line as well. He did a lot of the re, reorganization of the document itself. And I do want to stress that this is not verbatim. This is not the plan that we're going to follow come heck or high water. This is a plan that gives us an outline. This is a formula that we can follow and still can be altered or amended as necessary given the circumstances that we're faced with. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, I believe Curtis, I see his picture there, so he's, he's still on the line with us as well.
AJ and Curtis, I have a quick one, something, again, corresponding with my civilian life or private, whatever. One issue that I have seen, and you're corresponding some of these openings with, with federal phases like three, two, things of that nature. We, I don't know if, I know that's the federal guidance, but I, I don't know if any states have been following that specifically. Do you, if we as a state, because we, we as a state open without having like 14 days of hills, I pretty much, all states have done that, and it's not just Iowa, but all states. Are you going to have issues corresponding with the levels with, within this program if we as a state are not following it either, the phased approach?
AJ, I think I can, I think I can address that one. The first thought on, on the first page of the document, at the beginning of all this in mid-March, when we first met, we as city staff, how are we going to work through this? We looked at those levels, one, two, three. Those are almost internal, really internal guidance. So we began with, okay, everybody just be careful. By the time we got back from spring break, we were into flexible work schedules, canceled suspended programs, et cetera. We never did reach the full closure of public facilities and workplaces. So that's, that internal levels one, two, and three. I think when we look at the far right side, the far right column, this level one, when you look at the federal phase three, it's almost what you might consider, in a way, the, the post-COVID-19 world. Things are more or less back to normal. Work sites are, are staffed unrestricted. You're really looking at the vulnerable population. But again, to address your question directly, as you look at how those columns in there, level two is where we're at, and although there are hard vertical lines on this table, as AJ said, the, it's, the lines are definitely blurred. So then as we start to ramp down, for example, after July 1, or sorry, June 1, when City Hall, at least at this point, we think will be open, we really don't know how long that transition B might last. You know, we, we may have social distancing in place through the end of this calendar year. It's hard to know. So I think if you, if we consider that far right column, the level one that corresponds to the federal phase three and the reopening, it would really be that point when the county is telling us, the state is telling us, and then the federal government is saying, it looks like we're more in the clear than we were before. The truth is, as we worked on this, I think everybody looked at that and said, we can put dates on today, when City Hall will open, we think. And then after that, it's really, I think the guidance that we need from the council is, is the overall framework acceptable? So I wish I could answer the question more directly. You deserve a, a clearer answer than that. But I think it's really a matter of taking all of that input and guidance that we get and making sure that it is consistent with what's safe for Urbandale and generally approved by you all elected officials. AJ, did I more or less reflect where you want to be on that?
Very much so. Thank you, Curtis. It, and again, that was one of the things that, as Curtis mentioned, when we met as staff, as we receive written comments, and I think also in reaction to what we hear from our peers in other cities, and I'm assuming that you hear them from residents, is they're, they're looking for some framework. They're looking for a date. And, and again, we always qualify that by, we think maybe it could be. We, and when we get pressed for dates, we'll say, this is a target date. If things, if we see downward trends in numbers, if we see no reported outbreaks in our, our employment basin, that's one of those things that, you know, again, the, the desire was to have a document that gave a framework that we could at least build around, but still have the flexibility to say, we anticipated that we are going to open City Hall on a very limited basis on June 1st. Now, we brought staff back on the 18th to get everybody re-acclimated to their offices almost after eight, nine weeks of being away or being staggered. And so if we go these two weeks and we don't have particularly any outbreaks of virus or anybody gets, has an issue there, and as we get used to the new normal of operating within social distance parameters and hygiene parameters and everything else, that we think it'll probably be safe under a limited basis to start reopening our facility to those who want to have access to the building. Just as on a side note, as soon as the governor announced that libraries may reopen, I know the library director had a number of inquiries as to when can I come down? And so I know their plan is, I think they were going to adopt it last night from the library board, and I'm assuming that they did, but it was, some of the comments were very pointed. I pay taxes and I want this library open. Well, we're going to open the library when we believe through a process of, of a systematic review and kind of a slow roll, if you will, that we're going to ensure the safety of residents and our employees to provide you a level of service that if we do it systematically, that we don't have to backtrack, or if we have to backtrack, that's very little inconvenience to our, our user groups. So again, I would echo what Curtis just said, a good framework that we can work with that still has the flexibility to adapt and to adjust the circumstances that we obviously don't control.
Can you clarify just points for me?
Happy to.
Playgrounds, when will those be open?
The governor's proclamation say they're closed through the end of the month essentially. If she comes up, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If that is lifted, do we intend to follow right of way as well?
I think what we'll do is that we will more than likely remove any signage that they're closed, but also include, or make it known that this, the, we do not sanitize or clean them and that essentially that you use them at their own risk. I know there was, I know there was a comment previously, I think it was council member Poggy made a reference to that as it gets warmer and as you have sunshine and UV rays and everything else, that they're anticipating that kills the virus on surfaces, that that risk is going to be less. But I think we need to at least acknowledge that these are the things that we're not doing.
Okay. Because that was one question I received from the neighbors here, of course. They want to know when their kids can go back to the park. Number two, are we still on for July 27th for the spring cleanup or summer cleanup? Because I saw a chart earlier where it didn't seem to indicate that.
I don't know if Dave is still on or if Dave even joined us, but yes, I have, I, the information we have supplied to you or I supplied earlier and that we pushed out on social media has not been changed to my knowledge.
Okay. And third, I live across the street from one of the managers of the Urbandale girls' softball, and he wants to know when we, when he and the girls can take the field again, if we know.
We are considering, obviously, the UGRA where they play is a city facility and we're considering that a park. And so it is a park, so that's going to be under those orders from the governor. Once that reopens, we're going to look to them to submit to us a plan that demonstrates that they have, they're going to comply with CDC requirements for social distancing. We want to see a plan from them that's going to give us a level of comfort that they're, they're doing what they can to have a safe environment for players.
AJ, if I may weigh in here as well?
Yeah, do, do.
So Russell, we are also, similar to the pool discussion and playground discussion, we're trying to stay consistent with the metro areas as well. Right now, West Des Moines and Waki, I believe, have suspended there and through June 14th. So we're looking at, at certain dates, all of these with the caveat, if restrictions are lifted or changed by the governor and the CDC, the city would reevaluate. So I just wanted to share, the recommendation will be to push it through June 14th. Knowing there's a caveat, we would look at that and reconsider if restrictions are lifted.
Are we in communication with these different organizations, know what we're, we're doing to give them some lead time?
Yes. Each time that we do send out or make the indication of suspension of play or further cancellations, I communicate with each one of the board presidents. And as AJ mentioned, at this time, we will also be requesting, once we know what the new restrictions are, how they will assure that they will be meeting those requirements and giving us their, their plan. So I anticipate tomorrow when we send out the, the updated suspensions and cancellation schedule, I will be contacting all the, the association presidents as well.
Great. Thanks for doing that. That's, that's important.
I, it's my understanding that Dave is on the line. He can address the, I guess it's going to be a summer cleanup now. Dave, are you there?
Yes, I am, AJ. And yes, everything is on track for the week of July 27th. So nothing has changed there.
AJ and Mayor, if I can just mention one thing, I think one helpful thing about this framework is that as we know dates, like the summer cleanup, or as Jan confirms, for example, a June 14th opening, we can continue to update this chart and then share it internally and AJ can share with the council as well. So those dates will get more clear as we go along here, and we can add them to the table.
If the mayor give, or not the mayor, the governor gives the word tomorrow or Thursday that playgrounds will be open, are we going to be prepared to put that signage out? I'm just thinking if the weather's nice this weekend with it being a long weekend and nobody really going anywhere, people would want to use the parks if they're able to.
AJ, I don't know if you want me to weigh in on this. Right now, we have signs up at each one of our 36 playgrounds indicating that they are closed. If we get that indication, playgrounds are a little bit easier than rec programs or pools or, or sports fields and so forth. That certainly would be a discussion, city manager, but to, to remove those signs, like I said, playgrounds are a little easier than, it would take time for all the other types of facilities. Once we get the go-ahead, such as the example AJ used at the library, just because the governor says yes, doesn't mean we would be ready and have our protocols lined up. But regarding the playgrounds, yes, we could take signs down if that's deemed appropriate and safe by the city manager and you as council.
Our, our goal would be, as Jan mentioned, we take the signs down and, and probably, you know, logistically to get new signage up for all the playgrounds that we have to say it's open, but use it to say it's open, but use it at your own risk. We would work quickly to put those up, but my guess is that we would not be able to accomplish that in total by this weekend. But again, utilizing social media and removal of the sign should give them at least an indication that the playgrounds are open. I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb here and just say that most of our citizens who look at these things reasonably are going to say that, yes, we don't sanitize or clean these things. They probably have experienced that in their, in their use of the facilities prior to COVID-19, that they may see them scuffed up, they may see somebody has spilled a beverage on them, they may see all sorts of things on our playgrounds that may be, may be appropriate or not, but at the same time, I'm sure they utilize them appropriately and say, you know, and take appropriate care, and even given in this heightened environment, if you are a user and you have small children, my guess and my hope is, is that you take appropriate measures personally to ensure the safety and you sanitize and clean, and once you come back into the house, you wash hands and get everybody cleaned up. I'm not, I'm not foolish enough to think that these facilities aren't being used now. I know that people are probably using the playgrounds when no one's around, and there's probably no, little or no issue. And the heightened awareness of COVID-19 and issues associated with how long viruses sit on surfaces, I'm sure is becoming more and more commonplace. So we will do our best to get that information out there, but removal of the signs should open that up really, really quickly.
Oh, thank you. I just, I mean, I guess I want to make sure everybody, I'm generally hesitant on most things, but I think opening the playgrounds is something that, you know, on your own risk is something that I can get behind easily.
And again, as you mentioned, and as we've talked about, we have a holiday weekend coming up, and I would say that we're probably going to get more people staying home than we normally do because of travel restrictions or other related issues associated with families and that they're looking for outlets. I'm sure you all have seen them in your neighborhoods. We have a lot more people walking, riding bikes, all sorts of outside activities, and so I'm, I'm assuming that that's going to generate a lot of interest at our skate park if it's opened up, our playgrounds, all of those things. And we've always, we've, my conversations with the police chief have always been that we're going to do our best to be reasonable in seeking compliance from our residents when it comes to issues associated with gatherings and use of city facilities when they're under restrictions. We've done that a number of times where we've reminded people in large groups that there's still restrictions in place and please move on. And today, we haven't had any significant problems. So again, using this as a framework, that's still going to be our, our MO, that we want to make sure that we're, we're not going to be the social distancing police in the sense of, we're not going to write tickets, but at the same time, we'll respond to complaints and we'll seek compliance through friendly words of persuasion. Are there any other questions we may be able to answer for you?
Anything else? All right, very good. Well, with that, then, I'll call for a motion.
A motion by Obrant? Second by Blake?
Any further discussion? Please vote.
And Russell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes, thank you. And good work, guys. Very good work. We'll, we'll keep moving forward as we can, so. All right, item 9.3 is to consider the Urbandale 4th of July committee request, AJ.
Boy, this is one I'm really happy to bring to you folks. This is, this is the, it is normal out there. It's normal in Urbandale when we can have 4th of July. I, I know, and I will defer to both the mayor and Councilmember Blake, who have been engaged in these conversations as well, but what is before you tonight is a request from the 4th of July or the fireworks committee for some additional financial assistance from the city. And it's basic, and the assistance is really in two phases. The first phase is for the city to be the contract agent for the fireworks display before July 4th of this year. And John Conier from our staff has been working with the committee, particularly from the insurance perspective, and the request really was funneled through him from the committee and their insurance representative, is that a way for them to save money is if the city was the sponsor, and therefore the typical insurance requirement for the committee and the expense associated that would no longer be on their shoulders, is recommended that we do become the sponsor for this year and this year only, assuming that there will be additional normality in the year 2021 when it comes to 4th of July. And so we would be that contract agent. We would have no additional expenses for our insurance through ICAP on this matter. So it's nothing that's unusual for cities to sponsor 4th of July events, particularly fireworks, so we would have the insurance coverage requirement. The second issue is associated with financial assistance for the display itself. The committee has canceled the 4th of July parade and the carnival. And so by doing so, they've taken away the revenue stream that they have normally had to support the fireworks activities as they buy the fireworks or make the arrangements with J&amp;M Fireworks Company. So the request that we have received and forwarded on to you from the president of that committee has been for $15,000 of support. Clarification in the conversation I had with them was that the $5,000 that you have allocated for the specific use of restrooms, that be released and to be able to use for the fireworks as part of that 15, and that the city contribute $10,000, new monies to the fireworks display. The discussions I've had with a number of people on this, but particularly with their chairman, is that then they would, the committee has money already. They would send a check to the city, we would use that check, deposit it, write a check of our own, send it with a contract before the end of the month, so we can take advantage of certain promotional opportunities that the fireworks company provides to those folks. As I understand, if you secure the contract in that timeframe, that they have a 10% enhancement of the fireworks that they provide the community. Also, the committee also has money that they are dedicating toward this displays, and so our money plus the enhancement plus the committee's money should ensure, whether or not withstanding, a very spectacular 4th of July event for the, for the community. And I would defer to both Councilmember Blake and to the mayor. I know they've worked on these committees and had more conversations than I've been engaged with, so hopefully I've not left anything off.
Matt, do you want to go ahead and comment? You're on the last main. I was unable to be on the last main, but.
Can people hear me? My audio went out. I'm currently calling by phone. Can people hear me? Okay.
Yep.
So I'm hearing you through my phone, but I'm talking. All right. But yes, so thank you for that. That's the 15,000. Overall, will go a long way. It's, it's roughly about a half of the budget, and I know Mary Paulson, who's the chair of the fireworks is also on, if I get anything wrong, even more so. So again, that, we have a $5,000 credit, which we have with G&amp;M from several years ago when there was the misfire, so we're utilizing that, and so the committee is going to use 10,000, 10,000 of currently saved money. But we are, as the committee, are also looking for fundraising opportunities to try to make that gap up, so hopefully the committee will still name the hole and we would be able to backfill any of those money from, because the committee itself has reserves, but you know, you don't want to dip too much into reserve for these things, so we're going to be asking the community, and so we're going to still continue with button sales, whether businesses are able to do so, we will be asking potentially for sponsorships and other ideas, try to offset that 10,000 from the committee. So in tot, all told, and Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at about 30,000 display, which is one of the largest displays that the city, or 4th of July has held in terms of cost in very recent years. I think maybe the centennial year may have had an equivalent one, but beyond that, that we usually mark in more closer to the 25,000 range, so this should be a very good display.
Just my question here is this, AJ.
Yes.
So we're shifting then the liability from the 4th of July committee to the city, and then that's under our ICAP, and I understand and that, okay with that. However, the Pyrotechnics Fireworks Company still will have insurance like they always have. Is that correct? And we're some sort, and we're subrogated or we're listed as a, you know, hold harmless of some sort?
That is correct. John, are you still with us?
I am AJ. Councilman Russell, that is correct. The Pyrotechnics will still hold insurance and name us as the additionally insured, as well as the hold harmless piece that typically comes with the fireworks every year.
Okay, good. And again, I'm glad to hear that you're going to be selling the buttons because the mayor would need number one again for his collection.
That's right.
And has been discussed, and it is in the process.
Plus, I don't know what Mike Carver, I don't know what Mike Carver would do if he didn't sell a button this year.
So he called me yesterday asking about this, and I assured Mike Carver as well that he is getting fired.
I was going to say, we could include in the resolution that it's a requirement that the mayor gets number one, but I don't think we want to do that. Just as a point of clarification, that it would be that we would be the, we would be the sponsor, that we would have a $10,000 contribution, which would come out of next fiscal year's budget. Want to make sure that's clear, and that the 5,000 that we had earmarked through their annual ask in December, that is for porta potties, be shifted and be able to be used, because that's a, it's a specific use you granted for, that allows that to be used for the fireworks. So as Matt just explained, you have 10,000 new from us, 5,000 shifted from the, from the porta potties, a $5,000 credit and a $10,000 contribution from the committee, and there gets your $30,000 display.
And I'm assuming the police. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm assuming the police chief is on board too, as he, as usual.
Yeah, the police chief and the fire chief and I have had numerous discussions about this, and we looked at the three options that the committee always has had in front of them, the parade, the carnival, and the fireworks, and this is still the most manageable. And we really have savings and manpower and overtime because of the time we put on the parade and the carnival, so there will be some savings associated with it, and we're going to be able to manage this activity for everybody. Again, not going to be able to give you 100% guarantee that you're going to have social distancing. There's going to have to be common sense, but we have a significant amount of area that's available for the public to view. We will block off, as we had before, on Douglas. We will have the parking lot at City Hall and the library open. I'm sure the parking lots around us, I know Hy-Vee has been a little bit more concerned about that in the past, but we're going to have, again, if we have great weather and we have a great show, we're going to have a great crowd, and we'll manage it as best we can and we'll make it work. There's no question about it.
Absolutely. All right. Well, actually, we do have two items for consideration. One is, I don't want to cut off discussion, but there, there's a first item that we need to approve, the request to execute the fireworks display at the Walker Johnson and provide the 15,000 in financial support for that, so.
Where the money will come from out of next year's budget?
Good question. When I would, when I tasked the finance director about this year, I got a little concerned because we had already done all our amendments. So next year, we have a new fiscal year that begins and you have a significant latitude. My easy answer is out of the $100,000 that you have set in contingency.
Wasn't that committed to the relief package for the businesses?
No, that was this year's $100,000, Dave, and so next year, you have no commitment for that $100,000. The discussion was if the program for relief for small businesses was to be extended, then you needed to look at that possibility of using some or all that monies. We don't know if that's going to be extended, but you also have opportunities to amend, to redirect those funds out of contingencies or other locations as well, or to amend the budget that you have more monies aside, set aside, and that would, you could, you could remove that or, or make some adjustments in our fund balances as well.
Don't we also, and you alluded to it, but don't we also have savings because of the overtime staff and other staff preparation for the event? That's thousands of dollars of savings.
Yes, we can identify things that we haven't spent this fiscal year that will roll over into the fund balance for next year, and then we will also identify areas in going into next fiscal year that we won't need to be spending. We have our new gas contracts, for example. We have the savings in overtime for this event, so for us to accumulate a $10,000 contribution in next year's fiscal year is very doable. And it may come from a collection of general fund activities that we've had savings on or just one fell swoop out of the, out of the contingency fund.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Any further questions?
A motion.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Nicole.
I, I did get a motion by Blake and second by Pogie, and this is to approve the request of the committee to execute the display and provide the $15,000.
Any further discussion? Not please vote?
Russell, yes.
Oh, and I apologize because of the way I had that agenda. It didn't show, I don't believe. Carberry, Montgomery? Excellent.
Thanks.
And then I'd ask for then for a motion on the resolution 125, 2020.
The motion by Carberry, Montgomery? Second by Pogie?
Further discussion? Not please vote?
Russell, yes.
And that passes. All right. Thank you, everybody. And again, it's, you know, again, we, we need to have some normalcy, I think, and I, I think there was a way to salvage some of the 4th of July. It's, it's pretty disappointing that we have to cancel the parade and the carnival, but we can at least try to have some amount of 4th of July celebration, and my concern was if we didn't have anything at all, there'd be a lot of disorganized celebrating, so if we can at least provide some outlet for organized celebration, I, I'm in favor of that, and people will, again, will have to exercise good common sense and, and restraint, and we'll ask for that as well, so. All right, that takes us to the end of our regular gents. I'll pass on to council items. David?
In reviewing the strategic plan that AJ put together, I just want to say thanks. The, I like the new format, the green and the, and the white, the way you laid that out. That's a different format. I don't know if the other council members, the new guys, you remember that or have seen it, but it's a new format and I like it much better.
Uh, thank you. That credit goes to John Conier. He's worked with Lyle, and he is, he is very versed in Lyleese, and that's his second language, so he's been able to interpret everything that Lyle puts forward in a more readable and manageable context.
I do, I do note, though, there are several things that we're behind on, but that's understandable with the COVID issues, so I'm assuming that we'll just get caught up or push the deadlines out for some of those items that you wanted to. for some of those items that you wanted to have completed by now.
Right. Thank you. All right, Matt?
First, I'd like to say.
We can't hear you now, Matt.
Oh, it is my phone. Okay. So first, I'd like to say thank you to everybody for spending the last two and a half hours on WebEx with all of you. It has been a fantastic time. Thank you. Then mayor, I did my tally. I'm at 41 kilometers K. So I'm still behind you. I know you're at 51, or maybe even more if you busted out an hour's worth this morning. And on top of that, no, and I will say overall from, as a, the representative and past president of the, or current past president of the Fourth of July Committee, thank you, everybody. This, that is going to go a long way. And I know that we, in a lot of the community, if you looked at the Facebook page, there was a lot of conversation on the Facebook about it, but I think people were very understanding about it. And I, and I know that we will be the headline sponsor. I will make sure of it when it comes to recognition moving forward. So thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks, Matt. And I'm still at 51 because I've been a slouch the last two days. I'm sure that Adam's probably ahead of us and I don't even want to know where Dan. Okay, Ron?
Yeah, I just want to comment that our next meeting is June 2nd. And looking at the onward Urbendale schedule, we are to be getting back to normal by then a little bit. And I would encourage us to have a meeting in chambers rather than by WebEx. Council members who aren't comfortable can attend remotely and staff can do the same. But I, I think we need to start setting an example. And as much as Blake loves all of us being on, on video and stuff, I think it's important that we get together and be able to discuss things a little freer. And the other thing is, it's also important, I suspect Matt will be bringing buttons for us all to buy, and that's an opportunity for him.
That's true. We should have them by then, I hope.
Well, hopefully we can, hopefully we can do that. Thanks, Ron.
I'm Bridgette.
I've just got a couple of questions. I saw a brief headline that a couple of Des Moines firefighters had tested positive for COVID. And I know I saw a video of one of our firefighters taking the test. It gave me the shivers. But are, are first line employees and even our other employees utilizing the Test Iowa request service on a regular basis? I've got a friend that works in eastern Iowa in the, in the library, in a city library. And she's getting repeated requests to continue to put in Test Iowa, the right word is, but continuous updates for status. And then my other question is, what is the timing on the relief fund? Are we going to be voting on those coming up, or is the deadline coming up?
I can, I'll answer the first one on Test Iowa. We have pushed that information out and particularly for first responders. We've had a number of our firefighters and some of the police officers get into the queue, if you will, have been tested. My knowledge, right now, we have had firefighters test, but we've had no positive results. The first two that I was aware of that had a concern before the Test Iowa program came out, they both tested negative, except one was tested and probably had COVID and he got strep throat instead. And so we've had, at this point, to my knowledge, and I haven't, I didn't talk today to Jerry or to Rob, but right now, we do not have anybody in law enforcement or in the emergency medical field that has tested positive. I think Jerry, if he were online, he would tell you that the dispatch at West, Westcom is very good about identifying those cases. And when we can identify accurately what is to be a COVID case, we take all the appropriate precautions with PPEs. And that we have been a combination of good training and luck that no one else has received, no one else has tested positive. Not to say that that will hold true, but at the same time, as of today, we've had none of our law enforcement or emergency responders test positive.
Will they continue to, I mean, I guess I don't quite understand how the process works. Do they need to, on a basis, go in there and update their putting into the system?
Is my understanding that yes, they would, because I'll use myself as an example. I took the Test Iowa and I was not one that needed to test. I get periodic emails here at work because I use my work email and they ask me to update it, and I do. And I suspect that for their protocol, I will also say that my wife took it at our home and she, she, she gets the updates as well in our home email. And she just continues to respond that she's not been around anybody. She has no symptoms. And then the message is that you don't need to be tested. So my guess, I don't know the specifics of the program, but my guess is that they'll continue to run that for a while.
Okay, and I guess my other question was on the small business grants.
Curtis, are you still with us?
I sure am. The, we're taking our cues from the main funders and policymakers for this program, the Greater Des Moines Partnership. Today, after meeting with the Iowa Center for Economic Success, they have extended the deadline for applications through the end of the month. While response has been good, as Supervisor Brunel mentioned, Urbendale has just over 30 applications. There was the hope to see more. So in general, the partnership and Iowa Center for Economic Success are looking at encouraging more applications, maybe being a little more flexible with some of the guidelines. But your first question was about when, when those applications might be reviewed. The thought was to process and review the first tranche of applications, at least those that are very clearly within the guidelines and score highly by Iowa Center for Economic Success. Looks like that might happen as early as next week. We'll, of course, get the word out again by social media and looking, partner up with the partnership to get the word out about the extended deadline through the end of the month.
So does that mean that possibly all of our money has not been exhausted yet? If we were to fund everything that came in, or?
Let's see, with a cap of, with a cap of 5,000, we would not be utilizing everything that was available. We are almost with the city's contribution and then the private match and then the county match. We were almost at $200,000.
Right, okay. For the clarification.
All right, Adam? Yeah, it sounds like at least I echo Ron's comments about getting back to the chambers. And maybe it'll be Ron and I back there on June 2nd, doing the WebEx from there. But I hope to be seeing people's in person here coming up. As far as exercise, I have, too, have slacked off now that I've actually been going back into the office a little bit more. So I'm right on your heels now, Matt, so I haven't quite crossed the 40 mark. Also, just thanks to staff for working with the chamber and working with businesses on the signs. I just, I don't know who's going to make the call to Paul Decker to make sure that he doesn't call in complaints on them, so. Okay, thanks, AJ.
All right. Thank you. I am, as far as mayor's items, I don't think I have any further. Again, just to say I have 51, Adam.
Do you share how many I have?
No.
No, Jan, no.
Probably not 100 by now, I'm sure.
Maybe.
Probably 100, right? Is it over 100?
Quite possibly triple digits, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, never mind. All right. Well, again, thank you, everybody. Appreciate a good meeting. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, if I may please, real quickly, for your, for your June 2nd meeting, we hope to have, if that is in fact what you want to do, we have on order and they should be in place, sneeze guards between the council members to give you that level of protection. And the staff will be situated in the room accordingly if they're not in their office responding. That those who need to be in the room will be socially distanced. We will mark off chairs that have six feet apart or 10 feet, 10 feet apart, pardon me. And that we will then have rows designated. The capacity in that room will be significantly reduced, but our goal will be for safety. And at this point in time, both the city attorney and I will be sitting in the audience. And that they, that gives a maximum distance between the council members who are there.
All right.
All right.
As a suggestion, also, also all have face masks as well, or like.
We will have, we have face masks that will be available if you're comfort level, face masks and gloves. As you also, when you come into City Hall, you'll notice that we have a number of stands that are throughout the building. Hand sanitizer, Clorox wipes, Kleenex. We are, we're loaded for bear.
Are they Urbendale branded face masks?
They are, they are commercially purchased, so I can't tell you where they are. It may be if there is an Urbendale in China, it probably came from there.
I thought it'd be cool if they had ones with big U's on it or something, or the Lupo, but you know, that's.
Let me put, we have some very capable staff members who are great with the sewing machines. So they've done a lot of work for staff. Let's see if we can do something. There was one suggestion of making masks out of Urban Loop socks, but you probably wouldn't be able to breathe through them. So we've, we've shelved that idea.
I can make that happen, AJ.
Okay, thanks, Nikki. I didn't know you were still with us. There's one of our excellent. Nikki has done a fantastic job of providing face mask homemade, she and her daughter. So again, a lot of thanks goes to her, her family for really pitching in.
Yeah, we'll have to look at all the procedures on those too. Obviously, and as far as if we have any public comment, we may need to provide a way to do that virtually at all too. So we're gonna, we're gonna take this very judiciously and, and make sure everyone is safe and comfortable in participating, how we ever do this, so. All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Pogi, so moved.
There a second?
Second, we're Russell.
All right. All on paper?
Hi.
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 May I pose? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.